I am going to read this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that's the Lincoln County Commission Regular Session on January 16th, 2014 at 6:00 PM, room 108. Members present there are Ray Clark, T. K. Matthews, President, Charles Vance, Commissioner, and Charles McPean is Ax. Called to order, the meeting was called to order by Mary Hacker. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that's held on January 2nd, 2014 at 6:00.
I'll second. Okay, let's go to the discussion of possible concerns.
One more, one more approval minutes, I'm sorry. To approve the minutes of the special session of the, the special session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on January 10th, 2014 at 3:30 PM.
That's an all yes. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, we're at the discussion of possible concerns and action. On public comment, one of the things that I think that we should do as a commission is have a sign in sheet for the public to come in and speak. That way we can take a, we can actually have an accurate record of who does come in to speak to the county commission. If there's anything that we need to put on the agenda for the next meeting to talk about, we can. According to the sunshine law, the county commission, when people do come in to speak, if it is not on the agenda, then legally we're not allowed to comment on it because according to the sunshine laws, whatever is on the agenda is what we take action on and that's what we talk about. So, when people do come in to speak, what we will do is if we feel like it needs to go on the next agenda, we'll put it on the next agenda and we'll, we'll just dispose of it like that. But I'd like to also have, give everyone the same amount of time to speak, so a five minute time limit for, for everyone that comes in to speak, whenever they sign in. And I'd like to see if we can go ahead and put that in, kind of have that as a policy.
As a form of a motion.
As a form of a motion. And I'll second. All yes? Okay, so let's move to the next thing. I would also like to continue with the adoption of the Robert Rules of Order. It's the newly revised in brief edition. That's this book right here, and these are the rules that we will follow in issue to conduct our meetings. And I would like to have that as a form of a motion.
I'll make a motion.
And I will second. Is that an all yes?
Yes.
Okay. The next thing is to set the dates for the Board of Equalization hearings pursuant to the West Virginia Code. And I have a list of dates here. We need to begin the Board of Equalization before the first day in February, or no, later than February the 1st. February the 1st falls on a Saturday, so I'd like to open the Board of Equalization on January the 31st. Mary, I had to make a revision to that. January 31st, February the 4th, February the 6th, the 11th, the 13th, the 18th, and I have mineral day on the 21st.
Okay. And then adjourn on the 21st?
Yes. Well, the 21st will be our last day.
Oh, adjourn on the 21st, okay.
Can we go ahead and approve that?
I'll make a motion to set the dates as negotiated by Frederick.
And I'll second. Is that an all yes?
All yes. As the, the state told us they'll be down here on the 21st for that mineral day.
Yeah, because they, they're the ones that get that date, yeah.
All right, the next thing is the appointment to the board vacancy for the Lincoln PSD. We had actually two requests, one by Gary McMillan and the other one by Larry Bates. Seeing that Larry Bates does not live within the boundary of the Lincoln PSD system, we have basically one applicant, which is Gary McMillan.
I'll motion to go ahead and appoint Gary McMillan to the board vacancy on Lincoln PSD.
I'll second that. Is that an all yes?
Yes.
Yes, so that carries. Gary McMillan will be on the board of the Lincoln County PSD. The next thing that we have is Dora Sharp. She is requesting three ads in the Lincoln Journal to promote the diabetes awareness event. A half page, where it says a fourth page advertisement to run on March the 19th, the 26th, and April 2nd. The event will be held on Saturday, April the 5th, from 10 to 3. And this is basically a request to, I guess, promote this event.
This, the Southern West Virginia Health said they're a nonprofit corporation.
That is a non, this is all nonprofit, yes.
You want to motion for that?
Yes.
I'll make that motion to approve that.
And I will second that. Is that an all yes?
Yes.
Yes. All right, that carries. The next thing is Jonathan Eskew is requesting an increase of $5,000 beyond the standard allowance for the administration of the Robert Bradshaw Estate per West Virginia Code 12A. The commission set, and that, the code basically states, "The commission set forth herein may increase the county commission, by the county commission, up to the determination that the personal representative has performed extraordinary services in discharging the personal representative's duties." And if you, in your packets, you'll have a list of everything that Mr. Eskew has done to fulfill his duty as an executor of the state.
This is your recommendation.
It is my recommendation that we will do this.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
And I will second that. Is that a, all yes?
Yes.
Yes, that carries. The next is the drug prevention grant for Prestair. We, Tammy Atkins wants the commission to be the physical agent for that grant. Would you have a problem with that?
I don't think we have a problem. This is for, just for Prestair.
This is for Prestair.
And then we kind of watch over it for them. I'll make that motion to approve that.
And I will second that. Is that an all yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. The next will be Versi Sims with the Water Project. Versi Sims sent in, she couldn't make it tonight, but she sent in a, an email which stated that, she says, "I'm requesting your supporting opening an investigation into what appears to be some major fallacies affecting the alcohol water, area of water lines. I'm sorry that I can't be there in person to explain, but I believe them to be self-explanatory." She spoke at the DEP office, and both permits were submitted as completed in 2014. And if you check, the commission minutes, you will find that I addressed a monitoring report showing these two permits making up the customer base for the Lincoln PSD. We don't have any documents that came with that, but I would like to actually hand, when we get the documents, hand those documents over to the Public Service Commission and let them look at it.
Motion to that.
I would like to have a motion to that for that.
I'll motion that.
And I will second that, that we hand over those documents to the Lincoln, to the Public Service Commission and let them look at that. Okay, all right.
To the Public Service Commission?
Yes.
Yeah, not to PSD.
Not to PSD, the Public Service Commission. All right, now we're at public comments. Has anyone signed in for public comments? Would anyone like to sign in for public comments? Okay, Rick?
I was wondering if, I don't know if it would be the commission president or somebody could prepare a short explanation for employees about the recent checks that they got that were credited. I don't think, I think there are a lot of people who both didn't see it and have no clue what it means.
Okay, what was, what we did?
Just something, a handout.
Yes, we can do that. And do you need me to explain that?
I don't need to explain. I understand it, but I don't, I didn't want to be the one to explain it to other people.
Okay, all right then, we'll, we'll definitely do that. Okay, thank you. We're at unfinished business, possible action. We tabled Darrell Baker's request for temporary employees after speaking with Darrell.
I guess some due information on that.
Okay.
I was reviewing the municipal election calendar, and that's actually, you won't have to have that ready, so it's going to have to be ready by the 27th of May instead of, I guess it'll be the 9th, I think the 10th will actually, the day before is what we need to have it ready by.
What month was that?
27th is when it's going to be ready by. Those changes. And I know we've discussed and there's definitely budget concerns about where to get this money from and stuff. And I know we've come up with a way to get one person hired out of my own budget. I've done some, another estimate for a second person, just one more person to come out of your guys' budget. If you can give me that, it's 5,800. And I know that's a lot less of number than the 25,000, but that's a shorter time period that they're going to be hired, and that's only one person as opposed to three people. Well, if there's any way we could, if you guys could give me some relief on that and give me that second person. My, my, my only concern is getting the work done within that timeframe because of a primary election going on. Because there's, there's definitely going to be a lot of distraction in the office that, that, during that timeframe. And it's, it's a requirement by law that we give them an accurate voter roll. So, my thought is, and of course we discussed, we may be working on West Hamlin at a later time because they don't have an election coming up. But I really believe to get that work done, we're going to have to have that second person. I don't know, I know you've been looking over the budget and trying to get ready for the budget carryover.
Right.
You would know better than I.
Well, I think that actually have the, you know, I know that, I know the 25,000 boom is a big, big number, but this is considerable, a lot less. Well, I know that, but I think that whenever you and I talk, you do have money in your line items for the county clerk, and you also have the money in my items for the election. And we're also, you'll be coming, you'll be getting the $59,000 back from the Board of Education. So I was asking, and that's what I wanted to show you, if you could go ahead and pay for this out of your account. If you need help later on, we can do a budget transfer and actually help you out.
Do a revision. If, if we do come across a time where I can go ahead and get those repairs made. I know we will pull out the repair item line because I, I think I've even discussed this.
About that change.
We were going to get those worked on before we had the school board elections and stuff. We didn't have any downtime for them to get worked on, so that money's sitting there. But we may still have some down, enough downtime where they come out and work on some things, so I may still need money.
Well, I was going to ask you, if, if you could go ahead and do that, then, and you know, whenever these things come to.
Yeah, that's going to be roughly, what, with, it was about 8,000, so that's going to be roughly 13,000 or 14,000 for the appointment too.
Yeah, but I, but you have that there, and if, if we need the help, I'm sure we can.
Okay, I, I may be coming back through a budget request on some workable machines there.
Yeah, and that's, and we fully expect that, because we're going to have to get those machines worked on anyway, so.
Okay, and also with, with the money that you guys gave me, I, I know I mentioned this to KK, but I'll pass one, I'll pass one down there to Doc too. That was our, our NCOA review. We were at 3% difference, and that's the best in the state. That was this past year. The changes we made on our voter rolls. We had zeroed idle, which is, that, an idle person is a person that needs, needs to change. We, we didn't have any people that needed to be changed. We changed everyone that needed to be changed. And we had 585, I believe. Yeah, we had 585 that needed a, an address change. Well, what, basically what it is, it's a, it's an address that doesn't match in the postal services address, which is pretty good considering how many address changes we have here with the, you know, the 911.
Well, let's pass that down to Sean. I think that'd be.
I have, I just.
Okay. Sean was actually in the office today to come in.
You know, and I'm, you know, I think that when you do a bad job, I probably jump onto you for it too. But, you know, this is a really good job. This is a really important thing that's been done by the county clerk's office. It's been worked on, I know, before. But I mean, these, these type, if you look at this.
This is the break, yeah, this is the breakdown within the last year. This is the work that you, the extra money that you guys gave me when I done the budget request for, for the extra employees to come in during the summer. This is, this is what they, they come in and work on. And, and as you can tell, I mean, by far, we're the best.
Well, I'll tell you what, it's an excellent job, and we need to put it on our website. We need to let people know about it. And I commend you for what you've done.
Yeah, it's really, it's really something that has always kind of stuck in my throat. Whatever is the fact that we didn't have these roles right, you know, now that we're getting, you know, the way they should be. In fact, if you look.
They're, they're getting there, that, that actual 18,000 number, that will be coming down. There, there's certain criteria when, when you're pulling people off the rolls, you know, that they have to sit there and enact it for a while or cancel for a while. So that 18,000 number is, is an inflated number. It's, it's probably a little bit more like 11,000 or 12,000 within probably about 2016, probably the first year 2016.
I think you and your girls have done a really good job. I really, you know, I appreciate the work you've done. I know it's, it's a tedious process, and as you say, it takes time to be able to go through these different cycles to where you can actually get things correct and things like that. But I, it's good to see you addressing the problem and getting, and seeing these possible results. I think all of Lincoln County can, will be more proud of their county clerk's office now, so.
I'm pretty excited about it too, Doc. I appreciate it.
All right, let's move on to new business. Have you had a chance to?
Yeah.
To read the new business? We have a motion to approve the new business.
I know.
And I'll second. I'll do yes. The motion carries. All right, let's go to commission concerns. Dr. Baker?
I don't really have any that, you know, that I, I, I wouldn't like to make one comment concerning the Board of Equalization Review. And I talked with our assessor, Mr. Brumfield, a little bit earlier about this. And as I'm, I want, as you go through this, I know it's a, it's a hard thing for everyone in this county to deal with, and it's a hard thing for us to deal with too. But I, you know, I wanted to make sure that all of our citizens had to defend their rights, those things that they needed to be able to respond to the problems that they see or the increases that they see. But I didn't. I told Mr. Brumfield, I don't want anyone jumping through hoops just to be jumping through hoops. That if, if Mr. Brumfield can't help them where he's at due to the state code, he can tell them that. If they come before the commission and, and we're bound by the same laws that Mr. Brumfield is. And if we, if, you know, if we had a chance where we could make a difference in someone over a particular thing, we would actually look at. All these other things that deal with this valuation and things are things that we're basically have our hands tied as a commission for a Board of Equalization Review. And I'm not going to go into the, the details of why I feel that way or things of that nature, but I do feel that if we could do something for these people, I'd want them lined up back to back getting it done. But I don't want them lined up back to back to come before the commission, and the commission have to say the same thing the assessor said, because that's what the law says. You know, there are things that we can act upon as a commission's Board of Equalization Review, especially in relation to the minerals as far as that goes. But as far as what else we can do, we're, I find we're kind of limited as far as what we can do, especially concerning the valuations, because those are set by what the state tells Mr. Brumfield he has to do. And they tell us, if you don't agree with Mr. Brumfield, you're not obeying what the law, the spirit of the law. So I don't, but I don't want anyone thinking that they shouldn't appeal if they feel they needed to appeal. But I also don't want people thinking that they're going to get some remedy that we have, it's not in our book of remedies to give. We're not allowed to do that. So I don't want anybody having a false sense of, we can do this and this will be done. This is something the state is imposing upon Mr. Brumfield and his commission and all of our people in this county. And that's something that we all should realize, is that it's, if, if we could do something different, and believe me, if, if I could reduce everybody's taxes, I'd be the person around to do that. But the law just won't let you do it. And we're in that situation now, and I think that's, it's a, it's a harsh reality. But I want people to live in reality and not live somewhere that they think that they might be able to get, know this person and get this done, or know that person and get that done. Those times are gone. Those times are past. You know, we're all going to have to abide by this law until they change the law. And I know Mr. Brumfield's worked long and hard on this situation, and I know he's kept as best he could the public informed of what was going on. And, and, you know, to be honest with you, I don't understand at all. And I spent a lot of time in school, and I've had a lot of experience running business and things like that, and I served on several state organizations. But I, I still don't understand, if you go all the way back to what started this, was the REC decision. And it was based here in Lincoln County for what's best for our kids. And I know his intentions were well, were, he had good intentions of what he wanted to do. But what he's essentially done is he's split our kids up and sent most of, half of them out of the county, and then we're, we're having to increase our tax rates and things for, of that nature, to comply with what the state wants us to do. But did our kids benefit from it? You know, did the kids in hearts that go to Chatlinsville now, do they benefit by it? Do the people on the other side of the county that go to George Washington, do they benefit by it? And we're, but we all know this is coming down because this is what the law requires us to do. And I think we have to comply with the law. But I don't think, I'm happy about it, Mr. Brumfield's happy about it, there are any of these people who are going to pay a lot more taxes and are happy about it. And I don't, I just didn't want to get in a situation where people were looking forward to coming to the Board of Equalization Review, which they're welcome to do, and there's a process to do that. But they must realize that the commission, as is the assessor, is bound to what the state law says we can and cannot do. And we will do everything within our power to do what's right for the people, but we can't break the law just like no one else can. But that, I, I don't really have, Mr. Brumfield.
Doc, if I may, I, just to go with what you're saying, we had, today was the first day that folks started to come into the office and calling to the office about the increased letters. And, and we are on the same page. We want to be able to accommodate those folks with their tax evaluation increases on an individual basis. And we were able to do that with, you know, several people today. So what I would just like to say with you is that I encourage folks, if they have questions, you know, about their letter, but there has been confusion. The letters actually state what the new assessment is. And for a lot of older folks, when they get that, they think that that is the new amount that they're going to have to pay. So, you know, when they see 2,300, 2,400 for a new assessment, they're, they're thinking that's the new amount. So, we've been able to clear up a lot of confusion just today. And, you know, our goal in the assessment.
There was actually a call coming down to my office, and that was exactly, before I could even tell them they'd called the wrong office, that was exactly. They thought that that was, that was the amount they had to pay. And that was kind of the number they were throwing out there.
But the number one thing that, that can be said is that usually if someone is very upset, the thing that we try to do is to make sure that they are being properly assessed. Meaning that what we have in our books is actually what they have on their property. And what they have in their property is what we have in the books. And we have found probably a dozen today that there were just inaccurate assessments. And that kind of alleviated some of the burden. So, I can tell the commission that we are going to work hard up until Board of Equalization to try to remedy as many of those as we can.
We appreciate, and I appreciate, and that's what I was talking about. A lot of times it's just giving people the correct information or clearing up what they think it might be and things. Because I know, you know, sometimes I don't know the difference between the two. I get them mixed up and things. And I'm sure people that only deal with it once a year, or if the taxes don't increase, they don't even look at it. It's what they pay it, you know. So, but I'm sure it's hard on them too. But I appreciate the help you're doing. And I think that's the key, is that we all got to realize we're here to serve these people as best we can, we should. And, and that's what you're doing, and I appreciate that. And that's what this commission will continue to do. Thank you, Josh.
All right. Want to give you an update on the Tony curve, the issue with Tony curve, I think that's been reported in the paper. On the next agenda, I'd like to ask the, the county commission, I think we need the county commission to ask the prosecuting attorney to file a petition in the circuit court to bring the Lincoln County Commission, Lincoln County Commission together to find a resolution to the boundary line in 22 counties. I think that was what the judge felt like, that that was the best thing to do. And we need to make sure we put that on the agenda so we can act on that next, next time on February the 6th. Like to also commend Assistant Brumfield. He's office received a $13,000 grant, which will finish the GIS website, which will make it available to the public, which is a, is a pretty big endeavor. I believe he started on that at the beginning of the year. And whenever you get online, you'll be able to actually map out your parcel, and you'll be able to see who joins you. And I think it's going to be fantastic to have that.
And if I may add to you, Mr. Matthews.
Go ahead.
With the GIS on the website, the, the important thing with that is transparency because you will be able to click on a parcel, and you'll see how much that parcel is valued at. Any, all 17,000 parcels in Lincoln County, and know that property is being assessed fairly. And you can see what your neighbor's paying, you can see what somebody's paying in Hamlin, Allen Creek, and so it provides total transparency. And that should be, after I've talked to Robbie, we're probably about a month to six weeks away from that being accessible from our county website.
That's, that's awesome. Yes, technology. Received a communication about the Lower Mud River Water Extension Project. We actually did not receive the Small Cities Block Grant for that. We were denied. So, wanted to pass that along. But there is some goodness. We did receive 1.3 million in the Small Cities Block Grant for the Francis Creek Project. I think that may have been reported in the paper. If it hasn't, it probably should.
Can I make a comment, sir?
Go ahead.
And with the Francis Creek project, once it's completed, the next project that we're looking at funding would be the Lower Mud River Project. So, even though they did not receive a grant on this funding cycle, as soon as we are eligible to submit another Small Cities Block Grant for a water project, now, the commission can change her mind, and we have kind of been, over the last several years, going in that direction, where these people will be the next in line, where they're submitting and supporting a Small Cities Block Grant for the Lower Mud River Project. So, and the law, if the law's, I think the way they're written, you can only have one active at a time in the county. Once that one, once we know we're going to be finished with that one, we can apply for the, reapply for the money for the Lower Mud River Project.
And that's what we're doing. The next thing, I want to remind you that we have a, a hearing with Scott Atkins on February the 6th at 4:30. Okay. Yep. And the last thing is, that I wanted to address is, I want to just personally thank, and, and I want to thank for, you know, the commission. I think we as a commission need to thank all the volunteers and supporters that helped us out in this water crisis. The, if you, if you, of course, everybody's been affected by it. But when you go down and you see people who have jobs through the day, and they're coming out at night, passing out water, the Tri River Transit, Armstrong, all these businesses, and any, basically, everyone that could help helped. And it's actually, it was, it was a pretty amazing feat. It was unfortunate what happened. But whenever it kind of all boils down to it, you know, we got help from the Lincoln Public Service District, you know, they stepped up, and they were able to accommodate 700 additional customers. West Hamlin tried to accommodate, they were at max capacity. And given, you know, and, you know, speaking with Lonnie Wilson, you know, we had the, the extreme, the cold weather, and that affected, you know, a lot of the lines. And trying to, there was a lot of leaks. If, probably if we didn't have that, then West Hamlin would have probably been able to do a lot more. But, but I just really want to commend the, the action of our citizens, our volunteers, everyone who participated. And, you know, just even the people just going to checking on their neighbor, that was a big deal. But that's Lincoln County. And if you want to get stuff, people, people come together.
Well, I don't think President Matthews will pat himself on the back, but I will. Because I thought, I thought he got a really good job coming into this right off the bat. And I was sitting home thinking, do I have a good impression of the commission out there? And also, all the time, the year I was president of the commission, I never, I happened to be watching Channel 3 News, and it had Alan Holder's name, it was Commissioner Matthews on. And I was like, for all that time I'd served, I don't think I'd been done that way. But, but I do want to commend him for, and, and I want to also thank him for keeping the commission up to date on what it was going on and things of that nature. Because I know it's a real tough job he has, and, and I think he came through with flying paws. I, I know it's a real tough job he has and, and I think he came through with flying colors.
But if there's nothing else.
Let me, I want to clarify something on the record. Appointing Gary McMillan.
And that will be to the term of Rudy McCallister's term.
Rudy Thomas's term. I just wanted to. We do have another position.
I just wanted to say that.
No, we don't.
No, that's it. It will be for the remainder of, it will be Rudy Thomas's term.